It is seven o'clock. All of the meeting in order and starting the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, with its banner of white, with its sands, on nation, on our ground, in the middle of the great meeting justice ground. First item on the agenda is a community forum. Trans for the community members present to address the board concerning issues that are not on the agenda. Is there anybody here for an issue that's not on the agenda or would like to share in this group at this time? So, no? Any conflict of interest declarations for this meeting? None? Is there a motion to approve the agenda? Kara, is there a second? Jeff? Everything correct on the agenda that you've got?
I would just like to add personnel for executive session and then I added some more, three more enrollments that they are denied based on classes. So there's a total of five.
Any questions or comments about the agenda or the additions? There are none. We have a motion and a second. All in favor of adopting the agenda, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Communications and discussion, any celebrations?
We'd like to congratulate the FFA land in range teams. The range team placed second overall, that region with Trey Stewart finishing second, landing Cleveland finishing fourth, and Haley Clark finishing 12th. The land team placed sixth with Pete Hamilton finishing in 26th place. And we want to wish good luck to competitive tier football and volleyball teams in cross country as they get closer to their post-teen.
Was that Westman Springs?
Yep, yep.
I would just like to share something. Maybe this is the time for it, maybe it's not. We were working between Springs and Moonsocket and I just ran in to get a bite to eat at the gas station in Westman Springs, kind of real headquarters of Springs. And all of those kids, those kids being the FF18, were in that gas station. And I just stood back and waited for them to do their thing and talked to any number of them. I was really impressed with the way all those young people conducted themselves when Mr. Borzma asked a number of times, step back and let somebody else use the till or whatever. You never hear anything from anybody unless it's bad. And I want to share that those kids, I was really, really impressed with all of the kids. And I can't name all of them, but all of them. That's my two cents.
They did a great job. They were 25 points out of 2,500 from making it to nationals. So, they did a great job.
Annual reports? Business manager? Elementary principal?
We have some of our grades. There's one and three. They are either have already been or they're heading out to pick palpings at some of our local farms, which they get super excited about. Second grade this week, I believe they're heading to the debate of American Making Trust to learn about money. We finished up all our preschool screenings. September 15th and 16th, we have parent teacher conferences. And we're going to do this little replica. This year we're going to do Zoom meetings. That way we don't have everybody coming in out. But we'll set up time to give the parents a, to make sure they have that in. Fifth and sixth grade basketball program started this month. And I guess the end of first quarter is just right around, within the next couple of weeks. So, we can have one quarter down. That's it.
So Amy and I were going to start working on our financial reports of that money we're getting. And I got sick the day after the last meeting. And then Amy got sick. So we've only been together a day and a half now. So, we will record that in our next one. But we've talked a number of things on the phone and I'll be emailing you guys with that. There have been a lot of questions about, you might read some schools are qualifying for free lunches for our students. And we are working hard to get that for our school. We don't qualify by our pre-review percentage. But I emailed the woman today that helps us. And I just talked about some of local businesses and partners. How we had several positive households with both parents or child that we wanted to drop over. And that's been a financial string. I emailed her about the Beetle County unemployment rate because that factor should, I helped submit to get advice. And they just qualify and may qualify as some of those extra factors. So, we're hopeful that we're going to qualify, but right now we don't. Based on our percentage, we're like 8% to 10%.
Anything else? Field reports? Nothing to update on the consent report. We meet Monday of the next week for a regular monthly meeting. We have something more to report next month. Anything on the board? We are on to the consent agenda. Before we act on this, is there anything anybody wants to remove from the consent agenda for further discussion? Or are there any questions about items on the consent agenda? No question? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Ask present. Mike, is there a second? Suzanne. All in favor? Aye, aye. Opposed? Carry. Action items, new and unfinished business? ASBSD delegation.
So that's something we do every year. Every school board that is a member in good standing, dues paid for the current year, may appoint one of its sitting board members to act as the district's official delegate for the annual delegate assembly. So we need to go off here.
A pen, a mask, and a volunteer to do it again. If somebody else really wants to go to the delegate list. Motion by Suzanne. Second by Kara. Anybody else want to take it? All in favor, say aye. Aye, aye. Opposed? Carries. Emergency lead.
This is just a discussion item, but I wanted to pick the brains of the policy committee. So, beyond COVID, there's still a lot of things that happen all the time. Whether it's cancer in someone's family or maybe a death that causes a hardship. And some districts have emergency lead policies where, like I have a lot of cities, I've been here 24 years, where members could donate into that to go toward someone. So if I can pick on Mrs. Hyder. If Mrs. Hyder had a hardship, ran out of lead and was going to have to work with no pay, if we had a policy, then I could say, you know, I want to put into that thing eight of my days because I have so many. You know, regardless of who. We have a young staff, so I don't know how much, a lot of them probably don't have a lot of city. But there are a few of us here that have been here a long time and they got a lot. And we'd like to help those that might be in, and it would be completely volunteer. So Suzanne and who's on the call? Suzanne, Jeff, and Kara. So I'll put something together and email it to you guys, but I just wanted to give you a reminder. Anyone have anything like that where they work through your business? Do you mind? So how does it work then?
You've got guys get sick and if they are on help, they just contact us and ask us if we're willing. And we usually just contact and ask and say, you, whatever your name. We take down the names and then we'd set an order and we'd want them each to set them.
You guys haven't recognized that maybe you always send me? Do you know?
I don't know.
Okay, that is great. I haven't found anything yet, but.
Is the sick leave, is it capped at any point or you can have?
Yeah, it's 50 days. 50 days, but then you start off your 10 days. So you can start off your 60 days. But if you don't use the 10 days, you go back down.
So you're right. 58 days if you, if you share it, 28 days.
So my only chance would be that too.
Move on to school close contact procedure. That's what we have here.
That is, yep. Did you guys all get one? So, you know, when we closed in March, when we closed in March, I had notebooks full of how things changed so quickly because things have changed so rapidly. And if you would have asked me a month ago if I would have brought this policy, there's no way I thought I would bring a policy like this. Last Monday, you know, I've been talking to parents. We have a number of students that have been quarantined. Last week we were at 35 students on quarantine. Some are from school contacts, some are from family contacts. And talking with a parent Monday and it just was bothering me, the mental health side of things as well. And students mentioning so much school that are holding. And we had a small group of students that had witnessed twice already and be completely simply the group the entire time. And then I went home that night and the Iowa governor was on and she made a policy for their state for all of their schools to do this because of what's happening in Iowa. And Nebraska and Wyoming also did it statewide. Then the next night, it was on Hillland that Sioux Falls school board was having a special meeting. And this is their plan essentially. If you look at the gold parts, I emailed all of you at the end of the week, but the gold parts are just things I've added today. So at the top, what I added was just that this did come from the South Department of Education a few weeks ago. A few schools acted on it right away. Not many because, you know, it was new. And it was shocking when the South Department of Education came out with it, but they've inherited from so many schools that have been doing warranties. I think Sioux Falls has had over 1,200 warranties in two weeks. So, and France 35 of them, out of 355 in a week. And I added the phrase, the sentence to, "As of October 5th, in seven weeks of school, the COVID mitigation strategies have proven effective in preventing staff and students from contracting vaccines while attending school. Any spreading from the school will be closely monitored by the school nurse administration and Beetle County Task Force to determine future strategies or decisions." I just clarified below that that this will be for in-class learning and extracurricular activities. And then on the back, I changed that. This is exactly what Sioux Falls did. You know, I thought about putting, what I'm saying too is some students are getting sick. We've seen a lot of illness. And maybe testing as a precaution, even though they're not close contact. And once they have that negative test result, their doctors know they can back to school. But we had a Beetle County Task Force meeting today and then I had a superintendent meeting after that. And so, I put this back to what Sioux Falls is doing. So, I'll get to that part once, the boxes are probably the easiest to explain. What it does, if both people are masked in the situation, we would still for ourselves identify those contacts. And I would work with Julie. And those things will be monitored twice a course back. Would be monitored twice a, when they get there in the morning, they go see Julie. She'd take their temperature. She would do the symptom checker. If there was a scent or a symptom, at any time of that time period, they would go home for their quarantine period to be the precaution. Then if you look, anytime though people are not masked, that changes. So why the state did this is because they're seeking the risks of the masks making a difference. Like I said, our shift in mindset may not, two of us sitting here are back since the last meeting. And the shift in mindset and what I said in my superintendent meeting today into the Beetle County Task Force, which has some medical professionals in it as well, I am also worried about mental health questions. And isolation and quarantine. It, all of that has to be balancing and have to be their physical health, their mental and emotional health too.
The 35 that were close contacts and had the standard, how many of those came back as positive cases?
As far as school contacts, zero.
So?
As far as family ones, I believe today we saw, correct me if I'm wrong Julie, our first. And that wasn't a school situation. That was through a parent. Other family situations, they have symptoms, but maybe necessary, then maybe necessary they're going to get these children tested. Sometimes both parents have it and then when the kids get the same symptoms, they just, you know, say they probably have it. They've taken in all this to get that test.
When I read through this, my opinion, my opinion was, I don't care if they were wearing their mask or not. Because probably they all been close contacts at some point and not known it. If they are, they don't like some close contact and they're going to be wearing a mask. We have a nurse that works at the school that's going to monitor them and teachers that are well aware of what's going on and can keep an eye on those kids. I don't feel like we can quarantine if the school is not wearing masks. Like even if there was, just because Ted's got it and I talked to Ted and we're close contact, it doesn't guarantee that, you know, you may be able to be, because you're not wearing a mask. I think it's more important to have the kids at school.
And you mean to be quarantined in school by letting them come to school?
By having their mask on, whether in school or the 14-day period.
And that, yeah.
I don't think this, I don't think this.
That's what I should stress, I guess.
If you was in school, it was quite simple. And you have a nursery or a circle time, if she's, you know, those close contacts, we check them in the morning for showing those symptoms. And other close contacts, zero at 35, who are in close contact in school at 34, whatever it was. Zero came back, why would we count? Those kids sent them home. My kids, my kids, for a week, we stayed home. You know, that one week, it was frustrating for them on computers.
So that is what this is addressing, that the kids would quarantine, per se quarantine, they would just, they would come back to school if there's no.
Depending on what it was. If neither one was wearing a mask, then they'd quarantine home. According to the scratch.
Oh, and you're, so what I'm trying to understand Jamie?
I'm saying if just because they're close contact, why don't we, we treat them as, we would essentially employees, we'd, they're essential students, let them mask the full time to do their, you know, we can monitor at school.
But you're saying like a mask, a mask. Regardless of how like. At close contact, right.
Even if, you know, two of them were talking and it turns out one had it from wherever. Okay, Mike's close contact, wear a mask for the next 10 days of school or eight days of school later, two weeks, come back to school.
I think where we're at at this point, so kids, everybody is wearing their mask at all the times where they come out of distance. So, my concern is that not even if they're classroom, nobody gets that 6 feet, which is where our close contacts are and tables, which now they have desks, but that's where they're being. So we still should continue to wear our masks because it's just encouraging the kids to wear the masks. If they're not 6 feet apart, I don't think they're supposed to have masks on. If they see them in a desk and facing forward and class was happening, no. And that's where our, or maybe if you have three high school rooms with tables for a reason. And those who have a place now, but we didn't have this until last week with the desk.
How often do we have kids that are close contact and not wearing masks for just a little bit?
No matter how recent. Well, our junior high classes are pretty much all closer than 6 feet. And we have our biggest classes really, so it'd be pretty much their fourth and then a middle school class. That's like, because there's just so many kids in the classrooms and you can't get them quite spread out enough. I would say they're about four.
Was there some numbers that Kate Robinson calls, rather than email community, and was speaking to Kate? In terms of their study, was there, did I hear that somewhere that they did a study on close contact kids and they checked back to see how many positive cases there was?
I didn't send that. I don't know if they did.
They did, but I.
I know they've had 1,200 close contacts on the school in their district.
Right. Do you remember the numbers? It was extremely.
Right, I don't remember.
I, I don't either. I, I didn't know if you had sent us another.
So how do you handle that? Like, say if I get COVID, do you mind? If it is. So say Amy has COVID and my kids were around me, no masks. If, if it's outside of school, we have, we have nothing to do with it. And the Department of Health, it would be what Amy would request that the Department of Health. So because the Department of Health would consider my kids close contact or Amy at that point, I have to. Because it didn't happen. For your kids, okay. That's what I wondered, yeah. They were not, but I was, right, but I just wanted to. There was some discussion in this, my superintendent meeting today. It's such a fluid situation and our thinking shifts all the time as we learn. Will that be the next discussion topic after this? Because we have families that have had a positive, that they have their 10 days. If they can't isolate from their children, their children have additional 14. If another family member tests positive, that 14 starts over and that happened to one of our families today in 14. All within a family setting. But that means those children are going to be missing. I'd say that happened three times to this day. Oh, it did three, it's a third, right. So without them being sick, with their third family member, it's, they're going to be out happily. I'd say it's 40, 40 days per school. Yeah. So this doesn't address that. What we talked in our superintendent meeting, will that be the next thing that comes up in discussions because that's also a hardship. But that's directly to the Department of Health and not to the schools have to do with. But it's definitely a hardship on the students, for sure.
Is there anything inside that you can, you mean? Is there anything inside that you can get if they're paying 30 to 90 days after COVID?
What Amy and I were told by our tracer is 90 days.
Year for a community?
Supposedly. Mrs. Hyder told me to live it up and I said, I'm not willing to live it up and maybe get it. So, but I.
Yeah, I was just curious when we were talking, the parents stay home, so two parents stay together, the kid's fine. Nothing happens, it's still in the 14 days, 10 to 14 days. When the kids got staying another 14 days but have no symptoms, I mean, like you said, it's a complex of mental well-being, kids and everything else. I mean, we had a, I mean, kind of, you try and say, we have a whole time of this and this and that. Nobody's showing any symptoms or whatever. I mean, I know that the mandate is 14 days and then this and that and after somebody else shows something. But, you know, a person could miss three months worth of school and three months worth of work. Larry, no family members, Beetle County, that can stay and work that long without losing their. There's no one who can, it's hard, right?
Right.
I mean, that really.
Because for those.
That's not true because that's not true, you're not.
Right, for those parents, that's, for that family, that's going to be a big hardship. Right. That's why that came up in our superintendent discussion is that, that's probably going to be the next thing because we're talking about just what we can do, but. Unfortunately, that's still under the DOH, so there's nothing that we can address as a school. Because it's not a school.
Can you take the initiative if you're, if you're symptom reading, if you don't, like you started in the very beginning, you talked about there for 48 hours of fever or whatever, you know, basically that kind of period. I mean, can we go back, can we go to that, you know, and leave it with the school nurse plus, and make the parents who are, we talked about this before, it's kind of something whatever, but make the parents, all right, you need to test for the well-being, not of your own kids. You don't know what's going on, you can send to them, that you want to be home for two months with your kid. If you've got three or four kids and everybody's healthy and all of a sudden they have 14, you've got two kids that show up and they have fever, now they're all back home for another 10 to 14 days. Nobody can do that. I mean, this is something we all have to look at. Because you know, we can't go back to the basics of, if your fever's free, not showing any symptoms and if someone has it, let's not be a fair to say, it all gonna get at some point obvious. So if you're showing any symptoms or whatever, let's make it known. You don't have AIDS, you don't have anything else, it was a vaccine. Let's make it public that you had it and so the school knows, the nurse knows. And if you were caught and you get, come to find out that you had fever and nothing else, and I heard those are the people that had it going to tell you something. There's another one, that way they're not that caught. Like you said, the mental well-being, these kids staying home and they don't even have any symptoms, no nothing. And it's only because they were close contact.
And if you have symptoms, doesn't mean you have COVID.
No.
Especially coming into the season.
Exactly. The way things are going to happen this month.
Allergies, colds, everything else. I don't know that we can address what you're talking about Chad, because that's a state guideline that we have to focus on what happens inside school property. But I support what you're saying 100%.
I mean, fortunately I had it in my house, but I know those other people aren't. We don't need kids that are going to see a doctor and everything else because they don't know how to act and they don't see a friend. The kid, like you said, they're ready and they started asking. The kids took the, the bad part, whether they want to accept it or not, they did. Don't understand, especially the younger ones, why are they home? They can't wait to see their friends. They need to try to follow. Well, they just kind of go. You know, they need that. That's probably, in my opinion, more important than the fact that they might get a cold and the people that, some people have heard, they've had gross head colds in the fall and the spring or whatever, then the symptoms just present. And some had it worse that they never want to do again. And no, nobody has a vaccine. I'm, I'm just going to out there. And no, nobody has a vaccine, I'm, I'm just going to out there and start a vaccine.
Thanks for your. Administration's not a dangerous proposal of having the kids come back in simply with a mask.
Regardless of Amy guessing.
Yes. Julie over there, there are medical professionals.
I think Julie first.
You know, I'm just saying that we've had thirty-four close contacts at school and zero that came back. That's thirty-four kids, it's uh, two weeks.
Those were, or contacts, those were masked contacts. Right, because I mean, they could have had masks, but they could have had masks if they were within six feet because they're still quarantined if they're within six feet. Right, it doesn't matter if they had a mask on or not, so we don't know specifically how many of these actually have a mask on of these thirty-five. Because Jamie, you're saying just any of this scenario.
I'm just saying because you're a close contact, this means you don't know.
Yeah.
Then I understand.
And I, I agree with that because my husband didn't really.
Well, and I understand what Katie has to say, because I'll admit, I had a daughter who spent most her ten days in school without knowing she was positive, so. And they weren't always positive, but I don't think any of her friends or anyone that she had close contacts are going to turn out positive, they're already, none of them have symptoms. And you know, she's like all the rest of the kids, sometimes you do, sometimes you don't. So I don't think Katie has to say.
Sorry, I don't think any of the kids that, at least junior class, Katie's class, that would wear their mask if they're seated in their desk, sitting at, seated in their desk. Because they were allowed to, once you're in your desk, you can take your mask off. If you get up and move, you put your mask on. Now, Katie had quarantine this last time just because of where he sat in school. Because he was in a classroom that didn't have desks, it's pretty far, they were at a table. So they were closer than six feet, which they probably should have been made to have their mask on if they were that close, which didn't happen, but it doesn't matter now. So, you know, and I think the biggest part of that is, yes, he got, he's getting his, he'll be back tomorrow. This is the second time, and he can distance learn, not a problem, does he choose to do that? No. But he's got classes that they give quizzes, in-class quizzes, so he comes back and he's got to make up like six quizzes because he missed one. But they won't allow him to do them over the computer. Now tests, I get it, you know, he can't. Just have to take the test and get back. You know, you can distance learn, do the kids want to do it or not? They might think they'd be ready first, but I tell you what, after two weeks, they don't want to be alone anymore. You know, if he wears his mask on, I don't know if that would have made a difference at the time. But he is not going to be in this school without his mask on, I guarantee it, no, I mean, that's his my hope. So. If it comes down to wearing a mask all the time, he's going to do it, so he doesn't get a call at two o'clock on Friday afternoon before going to a football game that he's out for another two weeks. So.
So I do want to hear what you're asking about this. Well. If they are quarantined truly because they are close contact and they can not come to school, is there a way we can give them something other than the quizzes? Because I have heard that from other people.
Than the quizzes.
Yes, because I don't feel it's fair, these kids are being punished for having to be at home. And then all of a sudden they have to come in on Friday and they have to take quizzes, well, that's not fair. Is there something they can give them at home to like make up for that? Because it truly isn't fair.
Well, that would have to be up to the teachers soon.
But that's fine, I mean, I think there has to be a way to. I mean, because if they truly, like if their parents have it, they have to. Then that's not fair.
Whether it's sad or they're close contact.
Right. And, okay, the, the question, are you going to mask versus not?
I say it's more general parents too, I mean, it's what they feel comfortable with, they want. If they're comfortable with their child being in a classroom with something that it's tested positive without a mask, so it's more parents' opinion, I think.
But if, if that kid gets put on the Department of Health list, they don't have a choice. You know, and which I don't really agree with, I mean, they're the best Department of Health. So they, they ask these people if they're tested positive, well, who've been around? So they'll name off people, well, how accurate is that? You know if you've been in close contact for more than fifteen minutes? Yes, some do. Some are not, and maybe that person got put on there, and there's no way to get that off.
And when the close contacts call, they're not even told who the person was.
Well, they can't, you can't.
Yeah, I know, and so you can't even.
So you can't say, well, well, I wasn't by a person for fifteen minutes. So what do you do there? I don't know.
So, the reason why we want to do this is so the kids can come back, they can wear a mask, and everybody's wearing a mask in their classroom. You, I mean, you can still sit on that five-minute break, if they need five-day mask, they can put their mask back on. If they are masked and I'm sitting, working on a project with Jennifer, we're both masked, no close contacts at school. We would totally take school a lot of the close contact because of the masks. That's why, and we talked about if one was masked and one wasn't masked, the problem with one not being masked, if you look at the statistics and you look at the CDC and you look at all that stuff, think about just us and the students we've had that have tested positive, and we may not a hundred percent require masks like some, let's say here on us. But we're still masking at important times of the day and trying to do the six feet, we're still trying to do all that stuff. And we've really narrowed that down to just, you know, those positives and it hasn't spread within our building, so what we're trying to do is get as many kids as we can back without having a huge rise in positives is what we're trying to do. So if we can get everybody to mask and the teachers on board and everybody's masking, and then we can just get rid of these close contacts, we're doing everything we can if the kid's here, that's, that would be the plan. And, and I'm unhappy because sports were really important for me growing up, and I know that I can't be in close contact or I'll be out for two weeks, you know I'm vaccinated. But if Mrs. Boothma was not interested in masking and she would really like twelve days off, she doesn't have to mask and then people are just all facing forward. But she could take me out in an instant in a classroom, even if I'm doing all my part to stay safe. So I think it's important that when we're in a classroom, we're all masking, that way everybody knows that they're able to get back to school and not be out in these quarantines. I feel we've come this far with students wearing masks. I feel we're getting used to it probably, I mean, that's the sense I get, so. We do know statistics this time, right, this is the third time things have changed, yes, they are good, no, they're not, yes, they are, but why not continue with masking and if it does help some, because we do have some older staff that may be more susceptible, I think we always still need to keep them in mind too in our school. And this is how, would be one of those specifically because I don't.
And they, they never take their mask off.
Yes, she has, she has asked the kids to keep their masks on for her safety and they respect it, they respect that, more power to her. And, you know, I, I do think we have to think about those as well, and if masks aren't hurting the kids and if they're not going to the fifth, and if they're okay wearing them and they're getting used to it, it's kind of getting even more nor, I think it's, it's fine. As is going with the mask, because this is the.
Yes, I think this is fine.
The other concern I would have with, okay, if the, um, children did not necessarily have their mask in school, then going home could possibly worry them to older parents and grandparents. I did have somebody in the public mention that to me, that, um, they're concerned if our schools are going really lenient and don't have quarantine, you can know they're with close contact, they're also there on the public. I had some of the older people express a concern that there's possibly more risk of spreading out of the masks. So what, what, what would we have to do on not, not doing quarantine? So that's coming from the older group, yeah.
So, uh, older people wearing masks?
The older people, yes.
So what are they worried about?
They're just, they're just thinking that they're, they're just thinking that the kids are out about because they think it's close. They're just looking at the health care of the older generation, possibly it could be as close, and that's their concern with the kids.
School is not the only place that kids can get COVID.
Yes, I understand that.
So if you're not wearing it a hundred percent of the time?
That's my thought.
I guess I'm not wild about masks at all, but I will say this in defense of the administration and the homework that Dave Young. If it means keeping kids in school and getting kids that are quarantined, I don't want to name any names, but at home that are off for fourteen days, we could change some things to get them back to school if that means masking all the time, and I'm not familiar with putting masks all the time, what they don't. I would recommend that we do something along those lines. To get the kids back in school, I do believe it's more important for the kids to be back in school for their mental well-being, or the well-being of their peers, well-being of their parents.
Keep them in school. We're this far, this is exciting, I mean.
And again, I, I hear Jamie's point too, I realize that, that masks aren't a hundred percent, nothing is a hundred percent. We're learning as we go, things are fluid, things are changing, I do, from just listening to everybody here, I'm, I'm hearing a lot of the kids need to be in school to view the general consensus, and I'm not sure if I'm making a motion, I'm just taking a opinion.
So explain this to me then, how this is going to work. Now, maybe not every kid wants to wear a mask while they're in the classroom. But my kid's in the classroom wearing his mask by choice. And there's a person seated, seated within six feet or whatever, they don't have their mask on, they're tested positive.
John.
It's my kid and they have close contact with the mask on.
So a teacher asked me how they could handle that, if they had a classroom of twenty-five and two said, hey, when we've been facing forward, we've been able to take them off. And what if a high school student just really bucks you on that? I said, then you find a spot in that room where they are not, because they're not going to put twenty-three in jeopardy of, because John, I don't want to make those phone calls anymore.
No, I know, but would my kid be in jeopardy if he has his mask on and the other kid doesn't?
With this, if they did not have that student move, we talked about it in our, I don't think the middle school talked about it in elementary, but in my, in our high school meeting Friday, we talked about it, because we said, what if we have that one student that like Lindsay said, I'm not at anything, I don't care, I want to go home for two weeks, then guess what, I don't like you, so I'm not going to wear my mask, and I said, they're not going to sit, we're going to make sure those kids, they're not going to sit near anyone. I mean, because that's not fair. It, it has become with these close contacts heartbreaking and not fair.
I mean, I'm not all for mandatory mask seating.
But you want your children to stay in school.
Does my mother, that is eighty-three years old, wear a mask at work? No, that's her choice. Okay? But if it's my kid's in school and he's going to wear his mask all the time, so he doesn't get that call for the third time. Never had any symptoms, you know, I'm all for it, if he wants to wear it, great. He wants to stay in football, he'll want to stay in basketball, whatever else he's doing, he wants to wear his mask? If that's going to help him stay off close contact list? Great.
You know, one thing I would say is when we came to school this year, we decided we were going to mask. Everybody was really nervous about how these kids are going to handle this and the little kids aren't going to do it, and we have not really hardly had any trouble there, even the high school kids that kind of, oh, I want to wear a mask, they stop in every morning and get a new mask because they know that's the rule. I had a first grader last week, they didn't get him out of class and he would not get out of his desk to listen to the teacher. Well, he forgot his mask, he wasn't going to go anywhere, he just sits in his desk until they had to get him a mask, or to put a mask on so he felt like he could get up and do something. So I think that a lot of times when they found out, it wasn't the kids that were so much, couldn't do the masking, it was just us as parents had a hard time wrapping our minds around it that it wasn't going to work for us, but it's, the kids have had really no problem. They just want to get to school and see their friends and have a good time, it's really what they're here for.
I have third years, okay, so we don't have, we're not activities really, and the boys play football, but half of my class or better, say, the first couple of weeks, as soon as things got down and everyone was seated, it was take my mask off. And now it's not even a, they like to avoid, it's like they forget that it's in the later, and I have the ask is, like, when I'm doing stuff in class, I can't hear him, and you pull your mask on, it's like, I can hear you better. Like, it's, it's one of those things that my kids have almost forgotten that it's even on their face and it doesn't bother. So, and that's just, that's me, that's their, so.
What if somebody asks whether the Department of Health positive for COVID, his son's wearing his mask, but they say that you, his son's in close contact? His Department of Health called with mask? His son's citing the story or?
No.
Or wearing a mask or who's in close contact?
That's, that's where I find it's a bad situation because they won't have interviews.
They know disclosed source. Or, I live in China, I didn't say.
Close contact, no.
He's still not on my touch. Maybe because he lives with me, but. He got, yeah, and Joel is never.
We have a daily test call the last month and he still did not get a call. He had a wonderful, very, very hospital on line.
If a person would change some of our protocol in terms of the sheet, I can't quote from that last meeting, we talked about CDC regulations and how if there is litigation, it will directly come back to the school board.
So.
Help me out a little bit there.
Jeff, that's partially why I changed that backseat part.
Okay.
Because after that task force meeting today and I have a lot of trust in them, they have a lot of experience, and then talking to superintendents. There are schools in South Dakota going to this, but no further yet. So those, Iowa, Nebraska, Wyoming have done this as states in their schools. A number of South Dakota schools are doing that. I moved our board meeting up a week because I was hoping we could get this passed tonight. And I said to Lindsay, I prayed every day, I've gone and now I'm that something, a student got sick between when we want to do this and tonight, so when I told those superintendents today, I said, I moved our meeting up a week because my fear of every day that phone line ringing or a student goes home sick and then we get a dreaded phone call that they're lost. So in our area, we would be the first ones to pass this.
Okay, but it, and it would run parallel in terms of the CDC guidelines or?
It, 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 in terms of CDC guidelines, given to school contact. So this is what, and I have a few, actually, that's where we read that. This is what one of the superintendents said. Either you're getting sued for certain of the close contact.
You want to scare him?
Right, right. Or you're getting sued for having somebody out too long with no, with no symptoms, or you're, you're getting sued, I mean, there's just all, nobody knows. Nobody knows if anybody's doing anything right, we just know that we feel confident in what we've been doing as a. that we feel confident in what we've been doing as a school and if we feel like if we tighten up. And the other states are starting to do this. We know this is maybe sitting on the desk of the governor is what we heard in hope. And that it's something that comes down, but we feel comfortable in doing this and I think, I think a lot of people are gonna follow suit that have it over.
Okay, so if we approve this tonight and say tomorrow his son gets another phone call from the Department of Health, can he come back to school because this is how? Because we've said it's okay. Or does he have to follow the Department of Health? How does that?
That depends on if it's a story.
Well, that's my week. Like, so if somebody in school put him as a close contact, now, now they have.
Yeah, that's a deal.
And that's what I'm saying, that's what I'm trying to get, that's what I'm trying to get.
Yeah.
So if it happens again and his son truly, everybody was masked except the person still naming him as a close contact, he can come to school because this is the code we're following. Correct. Like even if the Department of Health calls John and says, your kid has to stay home for two weeks because he was in close contact with the school.
Because if we passed this, Sarah, and Julia or I got the call, we could say, well, this is what we're following and we're doing our own crazy. And some schools are, I can agree with it, but it's not a
That's what they just get to make sure that.
But I wanna do things openly and honestly in the right way and this is the way to do that. But if that happened, we could say, this is what we're doing at our school. This is what we're doing when we're doing symptom checks for today. So through our school, we are not. No, we are not getting tested as close contact at school. We gotta handle it now. But the only way to do that is to pass this.
And that's what I want to do.
And, and we can't stop believing it's not school's fault. So right where that, you know, the rolling wheel or whatever. That we, we can't stop that. We can work on what we can do.
So we have.
Would you say you can?
We have, oh, ten percent of our students have not transmitted to each other during school. We have a medical professional on staff. We have access to the task force and the cards that contact racing. So I don't know if we could do a whole lot more than we've already done. In order to what we're doing, it's reasonable. So I would make a motion to accept that. If, uh, proposal, uh, change that is presented.
I have, uh, if, uh, maybe this is wrong, but if what we're doing is working, everyone's saying what we're doing is working. We've had thirty-five people in close contact, zero negative. Why can't we just keep doing what we're doing? And then can we monitor close contacts like we would teachers, like, like, so say that in close contacts, like, hey, then he's in close contact and he just gets monitored and if he would show symptoms, then he'd have to go home and he can still come to school? Because if we're saying what we're doing is working, thirty-five people have, have had to go home and it's zero positive. I mean, why, I mean, why are you running the wheels because they're working and then the students that are in close contact, you just monitor those students closer? Would that be an option or it's just a lobby? What we're talking about?
I think what you're saying is what we're proposing.
Right.
Send a close contact home for two weeks? That person that close contact could be monitored twice daily by the school nurse? Or fever?
If they have a mask.
And I think Mr. S, that's what.
What I'm saying is, what I'm saying is, so like, right now, so like, we have mask policy that we're gonna do. What I'm hearing is that you want to tighten the mask policy a little bit, which I don't necessarily agree with. I think we can continue with the mask policy that we have because it's proven to be successful. So in my opinion, again, this is my opinion because I'm not crazy about masks beginning with, is why do we need to tighten our policy if it's proven to be successful already? And then with our close contacts, like you guys were saying, like, they would come to school and we would just monitor. So like, yes, it's just like what you're saying, you decided we want to change anything with like the masks. But maybe that's not possible with the Department of Health. I don't know. It's just a thought.
Wouldn't you have to monitor like thirty-five kids though?
Yeah, so maybe that would be on the level of like four. I don't, it's just a thought.
Yeah, and I, you know, I'm not a big fan of masks either. But then regardless if it's mandatory or not, my kids are gonna have them on because it's not gonna be true. You know, I'm not, you know, I don't, I'm not going one way or the other. I'm just saying the way it is.
And Mr. S, I understand what you're saying because I, things are going well in school. Like Suzanne said, we're here, we're seven weeks in, which is awesome. If we did that and went with this as regardless of masks, no masks, both unmasked, we would be the only school in four states doing that. This puts us in line with three area states as a whole and a number of South Dakota schools. But if we would go with masks on masks, we would be the only. And, you know, in our superintendent these days, we talk about with these families that it is so hard when they're seeing the timelines. And I said, we have a game tonight. And one of the superintendents said, and I said, yeah, because you want us to be the ones that fell on the phone saying, hey, you're the first one that. I said, it's not that I don't believe that's gonna be coming down the pipe. But there is, to be the only one that would do that? I truly think if the kids know that they're not going to have quarantine at home if they're wearing the mask, you know, like I was visiting with you as far as extracurricular activities, say, there's cheer competition or whatever. I think they don't want to stay home. So if they're gonna wear their mask, they don't have an issue or like after volleyball game, if the younger ones are done playing and sitting in the stands, if they can sit beside each other and if something does happen, but they have a mask on, they can still come back to school? I think they're gonna be going, they're really still gonna stay at home.
Well, it's already, it's already happened with football team.
Exactly.
It was highly suggested, if you're going to a volleyball game, anything like that, have your mask on, you know, spread out. If these kids want to keep playing football or whatever, they have no problem.
They will do it.
Is it right or wrong? I don't know. We didn't mandate it, that we just say, hey, this is how it is. We've already went through one postponement. Um, games without coming kids, whatever. I know that's not school related, but, I mean, so they're gonna do it, dude. They'll do it if they, that's what they're.
Back to Ryan's question. Do we have any proposals in here about changing our masking policies? That we have right now? Are we proposing any of that tonight? As far as?
Well, as far as this, it would be, your hope would be that if they can't get under that six feet, that everyone just keeps their masks on?
Right, but this is not a change to masking?
No.
So like, I see the same things that the whole type, like Cooper's class, I'm almost positive Cooper's class, because they are six feet apart. I wanna say because Cooper says that they're far. So if somebody in Cooper's class means they're six feet apart, which is positive, Cooper would come to school?
I can say that's not six feet apart.
Okay, well then they.
Even though it's one.
Okay, well.
You don't have it in the school.
So if there is a class though, that they are six feet apart, do they have to wear masks all the time?
Yes, that's, but they don't have to right now because when we first started, it was hard enough to try to get everybody on the same page with the mask. We wanted to get the kids into it. We're saying, as, I am saying as administrator, I'm going to go in and say to my teachers, they will be wearing masks the whole time. They can take five minutes breaks here and there, but I want them masked because I don't want this one to affect this one. And I don't want a parent to call and say, hey, how come I, now that I had a close contact, my child can't be here for fourteen days, how come you didn't make a mandatory mask and your child can't be in class? I, that can't happen. So, uh, it's my job as administrator to make sure. So are, are we gonna tighten up? We're gonna tighten up a little bit because we definitely want to make sure that kids are staying in school and that we can hold, we're gonna be held accountable for this. So if we say, go ahead and keep doing what you're doing, this won't matter. Because right now, we have classrooms that don't wear their masks hardly ever, because they're sitting in their desks. And they're not six feet apart. So we're trying to fix it. We're fixing it. And we're trying to fix those kids coming back. So we're trying to, we're trying to, you can't go, you know, get everybody on the same note again so we can have everybody back.
You want to talk about shields with your big classroom?
Shields. So it was really hard to get a hold of plexiglass. People made fun of me this summer because I ordered like five hundred, not five hundred, fifty of these poster board frames. Okay, and they were all sitting up here and they made fun of me, but the egg class and the chop class has all cut all those flimsy little, uh, plexiglass out. They've made nice frames for them and they sit on the front of the desk. So those classes that are, um, we're gonna start with some of our bigger classes where the posts is together and they will each have a shield at the front of their desk. So not only will they mask, but they'll be a shield because they can't spread that six feet. So there are, they'll be a hundred of them made, that we'll just continue to make them and put them down. But the shop class is making this. So they are working on them as a speed. And you can get a hold of plexiglass, it's very quick, except that you could get a hold of poster board frames. So that's what we use.
So if you're behind a shield, you don't have to have your mask on?
Here in the dual goal, set up one. Because we have a couple of classrooms that are tight, tight.
So can you see through this stuff?
Yes.
It's just a cloud, right?
Yep, it's just, there's a frame on the side that sits on the desk like this and this is all clear. Similar to what our special education teachers use in our speech teacher when they're in a closed setting? With their masks, yeah.
Yeah, if they have a mask on, then it could be outside, besides that.
You know, when I came Friday and I, we had a teacher day and Mrs. Allen had a rehearsal in here, she was on the way down and there were some students in here and they were sitting here and they didn't have their masks on and I saw them and they, you know, pulled them off. And it was high school students and I came in and I said, hey, guys, here's what I'm gonna propose to the school board on Monday. I know you saw me, I know when you saw me, you blew your mask up, but as I'm looking at where you're sitting and I had, I had students in all different activities sitting there, not just all over. I said, you know what? One of you was test positive today and I know you've been in here. I have to do the right thing because I saw you. I cannot not see you sitting here without your mask on. What do you think about this and if you had your mask on? And I had a senior say, it really stinks what's happening to our friends because some of them aren't sick at all and they're ill. And I see exactly what you're saying and I agree. And I really like wearing this, but I really don't like it's happening to my friends either. I have a second, Ted's motioning. On the amendment to the start world plan.
So everything is highlighted?
Yep, yep.
Anybody have anything that they'd like to add or change? There's a motion and a second to adopt the following changes to the start world plan that is presented. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Posed?
Nay.
Here. Uh, all staff as critical infrastructure?
Is that meaning anything?
Living.
So does that, uh, that also make any difference a month can make? I came last month and I wasn't comfortable bringing that for the staff. And I met with the teachers on Friday, the teacher group, there were some parents in there, talked to some hourly staff separately and said, okay, actually, I didn't bring it up. The teacher brought up and said, I talked about this positive and then I was gonna bring it. And then I talked, you know, we talked that through various ways and staff members said, what about us as critical infrastructure? And I said, we're together, let's talk. And they said, let's do it. It's, living in a pandemic is crazy, what you're thinking you can do, but as you learn about things and so that's what I would like to propose, that not just those that we named last month, but that all of our staff members. And that still puts up, as Kevin said, well, someone puts the choice in their hands. And just that month's time, there were various situations that had happened to several of us, whether we've been a possible close contact or refracting it or or a completely different comfort level.
Any pushback from anybody?
And if they, you know, we said there's absolutely no pressure at all, then if they would not go with it, they would still follow the plan.
Is there a motion to name all staff as critical infrastructure? Mike, you have a second? Bean, question or comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Motion here. Here's the next item on the agenda is executive session. Followed by agreement. During the executive session, we'll ask all non-board members of the administration to step up, which you're welcome to stick around to watch the room if you'd like. Most people in the executive session, CDC.